Guys could just introduce yourselves, how long you've been working there, and are you in high school or college?
My name is Meredith Prudhomme. I've worked at the Crepe Shop for three years, and I'm going to senior year at Communications High School in Waltschep.
Hi, I'm Gianna Spinelli. I've been working at the Crepe Shop for two years now, and I'm going to college for bi mathematics and psych at Rutgers.
I'm Lindsay Lovell. This is my second year working at the Crepe Shop. I'm going to school for elementary education at Rady University.
I'm Melissa Balzano. This is my first time working at the Crepe Shop. I go to Rutgers, and I'm a bio major.
My name's Jasmine Balzano. This is my first year working at the Crepe Shop, and I go to Rutgers for psychology and education.
So, the Fantastic Five demonstrated great bravery and quick thinking through their rescue and assistance of the victim of the incident that took place on July 4th. Their combined efforts to protect the victim, secure the location, and administer first aid until emergency responders could arrive. This team of employees care and concern for the victim and her family in the midst of a possible active shooter situation is exemplary. The commitment of these members of the Crepe Shop staff to ensure the well-being of the city of Esberry Park's its guests and residents is both remarkable and extraordinary. The admirable actions of these young women prove them to be role models for all Esberry Park youth. Now, for be it resolved that the Esberry Park Mayor and city councils hereby acknowledge and thank the Fantastic Five for their heroism and community spirit on July 4th. Great job, ladies. So, I think I can say this, but there was a video of the Crepe Shop of this incident, and to say that you... to describe their efforts as heroic is an understatement to what they did on what was a heartbreaking day. Well, it started as a beautiful day, but ended up being kind of a heartbreaking day in Esberry Park on July 4th. So, I know the audience hasn't seen... I'm not sure if the audience has seen the video, and I'm sure it's not public, but truly like heroic, heroic efforts from all of you. So, thank you so, so much. Do you need a picture? Okay? Again, thank you, and thank everybody for coming out. Thank you guys so much.
The only thing I would like to also add is the Fantastic Five... I would like to personally thank their families and their parents because obviously you guys have done a great job of raising your daughters. And it's a tough... it's 2019. It's a tough time to raise children and everything. So, family, mom, dad, grandparents, everything, brothers, sisters, great job, and you should all be very, very proud. Thank you.
And thank you again, Fantastic Five, and thank you to the first responders as well. And nice job by everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to reiterate that point, we really want to thank police and fire for their efforts in controlling that situation and making what could have been a really, really horrific incident and containing it and making it not quite as horrific. So, kudos to the Esberry Park Fire Department and the Esberry Park Police. You guys are done.
If you're smart, you leave.
We are on to Item B, City Manager's Report on Issues Raised at Prior Council Meeting. Okay, Item C, Special Event Applications.
The first request is from Bond Street World for their annual block party on September 14th, the Block Street, 200 block of Bond Street. Second is the APFI Movies on the Beach, which would be for the month of August. And lastly is a wedding on August 24th on Sixth Avenue Beach. Are there any questions? Thank you.
We are on to Items D, Items to be Presented by City Planner Michelle Alonso.
Good evening, Members of Council and Members of the public. Tonight I'm presenting to you a request for a plan amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan for 504 Main Street, block 2503, lot 11. The owner of the property would like to put in a billiard hall in the building. Currently, the building... with the proposed billiard hall, which would be 2,775 square feet, there would also be a proposed tattoo shop and a proposed pizza parlor. The tattoo shop would be 1,292 square feet. The pizza parlor would be 2,095 square feet. In your packet, you have a sample floor plan of the proposed billiard parlor that shows approximately a billiard table. This requires a plan amendment for the Main Street Redevelopment Plan because this is classified typically as an amusement use. So, we would amend the redevelopment plan to include the billiard use specifically and only for this block and lot. And you would find that in your packet for the page, 38 Proposed Amendments in red for Community Shopping Zone, billiard hall for block 2503 only. The pizza parlor and the tattoo service are already permitted uses in the plan. One thing to note, there would be no amendment to page 42, which is the parking standard. The owner has requested that he not have a parking standard because he doesn't have parking for the property. So, if this council is in agreement with these amendments, you... not this meeting, but in the subsequent meeting, he would refer to the planning board for comment, and then he would adopt as an ordinance. I believe the owner is here tonight. If you have any questions of him or if you, of course, have any questions of me of this amendment.
Can you just talk about the parking a little bit more, Michelle? I feel like there was another property on Main Street that we just required them to come up with like 55 spots.
That... with the planning board approval? Yes, because the restaurant... a restaurant that can serve as a bar as well has a very high parking requirement. Again, with this amendment, the owner has asked not to have to provide parking. He has not produced any information of how many cars he believes that this use would generate. Maybe he can answer that tonight?
I think we need... and I'll just speak for me. I need some sort of parking plan.
Forget about the owner for a second. If this was a new application, forget the past application, how many parking spots would he have to provide per 1,000 square feet which you attached? But I can't figure it out. So, I'm guessing it's 2750, 1290, 2095, and 6130. So, as per the city ordinance, how many spots would he have to provide?
Well, the thing is, it's an amusement use. There's only one place in the city where we permit amusement uses, and that is in the waterfront redevelopment area. So, we can look at it as a standard for a restaurant as a comparison, and if he was a restaurant, this redevelopment plan requires a very high standard because it's a restaurant nightclub bar with the assumption that you can push all the tables away, increase your capacity. So, that is per 1,000 square feet. You would have to provide 15 parking spaces. So, for him, if you were going to use the equivalent, he would have to produce roughly about 43 parking spaces. But that is...
I'm lost where you get that number. And again, I'm looking at the application. I think this page, which is attached to our agenda, I think came from the applicant, Mr. Farnicola. We'll let them talk. But, I mean...
He had the request, and I marked it up. When you see changes to the plan, that's me writing the changes for the plan based upon the request.
I don't see anything.
I don't see your writing either. I mean, I see some scribble part.
Right, that's my writing.
We're guessing no changes to the plan.
Right, because the applicant has requested, because he doesn't have room to provide parking, he's basically asking for the addition of the use and not to have to provide parking for the use, for the billiard use.
Who wouldn't? I mean, of course, right? I mean, that's... it's just not making sense to me. Of course, who wouldn't want to not provide parking? But I guess I would assume that we would require parking on Main Street on some level.
For this... yes, but this applicant to provide parking, they would have to find a lot on site.
Which is what we required, and I know there was a different change, but what we have required other developers on Main Street to do.
Right, and what this applicant can do, and he can address it tonight, is talk about what he thinks the car load would be and how he can accommodate it, or if he believes that it can be accommodated down the street.
Okay.
The only other question I have is like, if we're going to open up Main Street to a billiard parlor, which I'm going to say right now I have no problem with, why are we limited to one block? I mean, so if this was... if John Moore was to apply six months from now for a block for the same thing, three blocks down the road, why go through this every time? Why not just say, "Main Street, add billiard parlors to Main Street"?
That's up to you. You can add it in general for the community, for the subzone, but then you would also... anyone else who comes in as well would have no parking requirement.
Well, that's a horse of a different color that we haven't decided yet.
Exactly.
Because we haven't decided if they have to provide parking.
Exactly.
And I think each one should be on an individual merit basis.
That's why I only did it for this block and lot.
Yeah, and I have to say, I mean, and I'll... whatever you guys want to do, but I don't like the idea of having like 10 billiards on Main Street. I mean, I'm fine with one.
We already have one, don't we? Don't we have one on Second and Main?
That I'm unaware of.
Underneath the old Paso Lepos on Second and Main.
Is that a billiard?
Yeah, it has been.
For how long?
For years. Unless it's recently closed, it's been open as a billiard hall.
So, that predates redevelopment for it?
And there's no alcohol served at the billiards?
This one, no. He does not have a liquor license.
Okay.
I think the other one may or may not. They may be attached to a bar. But I don't know that for sure. They are, right, Jessica?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, I think it predates the plan, Michelle, but there is one already on Main Street.
Okay.
Second.
Do you want the applicant to address any of your concerns tonight?
Sure.
Good evening, Paul Farnicola. We have the applicant who's listening tonight. So, the reason we had requested the waiver for parking in this building has been used most recently, there's three uses of the building. A barber shop, which is on the north end, Mr. Lee's Retail Store.
You guys considered...
Thank you. Mr. Lee's Retail Store and a nail salon. It's been used predominantly, I guess you could say, really describe all three of them as service, personal service and/or retail use. We were requesting the waiver with regard to the parking because, as Mr. Farnicola pointed out, there is no on-site parking. So, he doesn't have the ability to provide any parking on-site. The billiard use would be, obviously, predominantly after 5:00 p.m. where the surrounding area, there would be more parking available. I think it was the mayor had the question about the specific of the number of parking spaces which would be generated from the use. If you want that information, we would have to then provide that via the traffic engineer. Because we think that's the use as far as the number of parking.
No, no, I'm just... I thought it was like something simple where so many square feet, you need X amount.
It was difficult for me to extrapolate from your... you know, what is the standard that would be applied? Because clearly, it's not the intensity.
I don't think you need 43. I'll put it that way.
Right.
That's between, I guess, you and Michelle to figure out. And when other people have come before, maybe this board or Planning Board, and said, "We want to do this", we said, "Well, have you looked at any other sites for parking"? And as much as I know, you don't own the parking lot in front of the building. I think that's owned by the organization on Summerfield. Have you approached them? Because I agree with you. The majority of your business is going to be after 5 o'clock, and they're closed after 5 o'clock. So, have you approached them and say, "Hey, can we work out a deal on some of your spots after hours"?
No, we have not tried to negotiate a deal with them.
Do you think that's a reasonable request? That we ask you to look into that? Or do you... I think you look...
Just trying to be consistent with other developers that we have absolutely made get a rent a lot. One in the old... well, what was it? Gay Bar Paulies? And then it was... anyway, it doesn't even matter. We have required other developers to find parking for their businesses on Main Street. I just think we should be consistent with that.
I guess the first thing then, we would need to determine what is the standard? Because what we're going to look... we have to get the threshold issue, which is the number of parking spaces. Because if the mayor and I both agree, it shouldn't be 43. So, what are we talking? Four, are we talking 40? Because that, obviously, then, the potential sites is impacted by the number of spaces. So, I think that's the threshold issue, is the number of spaces that would be required for the billiard use.
Right. And I'm not faulting Michelle with her number whatsoever because I don't know the right number. But I think a conversation with you and Michelle can get that number within 24 hours, and we go from there. This is not on the agenda tonight to be voted on.
We understand.
So, it's just like, you know... again, I don't have any problem with the use. I would like to see parking and a little bit of problems. It's not okay for the entire Main Street because every time... and I understand what Michelle's saying, because of the lack of parking, you may want to do each one, one by one, but...
So, I just think we should like... I'm going to give a standard tonight. I would sit around and calculate, and then explain to us how you came up with the standard, and then give them the standard.
Right, but, okay, I totally agree. But looking at our ordinance, where you need so many spots for be it residential, commercial, or anything, and it lists this, how many purse thousand square feet.
How did you come up with that?
And since she just talked to Mr. Manziel, the transportation planner, and they came up with nine.
How did you go from 43 to nine?
Because she just talked to Michael.
Okay, so I just would like somebody to explain. That's not in public.
No, but, well, I can explain it to you. But the thing is, it's not a nightclub. The standard that I used, I addressed, is for restaurants that turn into nightclubs. Unless this is going to have live music acts at a certain point where it's jammed full of people who'll use a standard like that. We just used a standard that's used for arcades and games and amusements, and it's approximately...
What would you say is for a...
Well, for 300.
Okay, again, I think the three of you can get together and figure out that number. We figured out it's not 43. We figured out it's closer to maybe nine. We're in a much better ballpark. And then I think that gives you a much better opportunity to reach out to the organization. Next thing you say, "Off-hours. My business is mostly after 5:00 p.m. What can we do to use your lot for nine spots"? And again, in theory, I have no problem with it. I think it's just a matter of you, Michelle, and Michael figuring out the parking, and we go from there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
If somebody's dead against it, speak up now. Don't waste their time.
You're not going to have alcohol, right? You're not going to be serving alcohol in the billiards, right?
No, no.
Okay.
Is it going to be used for anything other than playing billiards, like special events? Excuse me?
Are you going to use it for any other use other than billiards, such as special events?
Just the billiards.
Okay, just keep in mind, over the years, past years, there has been quite a few beer shops on Main Street.
Right.
Check the record with the police department and see if any violations happened when he was there or anything. Just, I don't know, Michelle wasn't here during those years, but you could check into all that information.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Good luck.
The other item I have tonight is a request for a five-year tax abatement for 1317-1319 Springwood Avenue to build an artist center. The proposal that you have before you tonight is a conceptual. It's to design an arts and crafts center that would be not only for showing art, but for the making of art. And the applicant had put various art forms, such as painting, pottery, sculpture, and photography. They would rent out studios based on individual artists from local areas and beyond, and that they were going to offer a community component, offering arts and crafts workshops to Esberry Park residents with a particular focus on West Side youth. The building would consist of two floors for a total of 3,000 square feet. The building will house a number of art studios of different sizes ranging from 250 to 600 square feet and a gallery retail area for shows and events. In addition, there would be a space on the second floor, a maximum 500 square feet, that would be designed as a live work artist studio equipped with a small bathroom and kitchenette to host an artist and residence for short periods of time. The artists could be from the U.S. or from abroad, and they would bring their unique talents to the Esberry Park area. You have before you... I just read a brief part of the description that you have before you tonight. You also have before you tonight... Oh, actually, I want to add that the applicant offered that they would do a workforce component for the construction of this building. And the applicant is asking for a tax abatement because they basically feel that this building would be an asset to that section of Springwood Avenue and give an economic boost to the area. And of course, would basically be one of the pioneer retail spaces that would go into that section. You also have before you a depiction of what the building would look like. You also have a rough calculation of what the property taxes would be for this building with the structure if there was no five-year tax abatement, and what the taxes would be with a... with the tax abatement, with the taxes increasing every year. I believe that the owner of the property is here tonight. If you have any questions for him, or of course, if you have any questions for me.
I think that there's going to be some questions. So, if the owner wants to come up, it makes it easier. Michelle, stay also. No.
Actually, I have just a synopsis that you guys can... just kind of who I am and what kind of the ideas I'm looking towards.
Have you done projects like this before?
No, I'm... by trade, I'm not a developer. I'm a physician. I work here at Jersey Shore. I'm a neurologist. But I'm an artist and do pottery, and that's kind of part of my interest in this as well, be a space to do art myself as well as maybe teach other people who do pottery.
And how... what's the criteria for actually being an artist?
Well, I think I can draw on a piece of paper and call myself an artist. I don't have a specific definition for that.
So, when you talk about renting out space to artists, do they have to adhere to some type of criteria? How do you determine that?
I mean, this is in a development phase, but I mean, that's the idea. It's going to be, you know, by artists, for artists, and have that... that's the purpose of the mission statement of the project. So, I mean, I don't know exactly what bar I'm going to put, but that's the idea, is that these people who are going to be renting these spaces, which are basically a sink and nothing else, that they can actually produce art. I mean, it's not someplace where people can live.
This, to me, is like the ideal... this is what we've... this project is essentially what we've searched for for the five-year tax abatement, which is a project that won't get off the ground without it in an area that needs redevelopment and that supports artists. I mean, all... you know, Pat Fasano tries to get this for the dollar store after he's built it, but to me, this David's project is the entire reason I've ever voted for the five-year tax abatement.
And to be honest, it's not a money-making proposition to begin with. And there's probably going to be some difficulty at the beginning as far as getting community involvement. There's a flexible space that has to be basically, you know, developed, and projects and programs have to be developed for it. So, there's going to be a period of time where, at the beginning, it's more going to be difficult. And, you know, it's a financial outlay for me to get involved in the project. So, getting me to that point or help getting that started would be appreciated. I'm a part of the community. I live here. I drive through Springwood every day to go to work. You know, I go to the... I go to Kula Cafe. I go to Kula Farm for learning different things. So, I am a part of this town, and I think that, you know, development there is going to help all of us who live here. So, that's kind of part of what this is all about.
Let me say that I agree with Amy, and I like the project very much. And, but just so the rest of the council and Amy knows, this will be the last one we're voting on because the five-year pilot expired. But you were smart enough to file this in December 28, 2018. So, a question I have, like, what took it so long to get it to council?
Um, I was actually... so, if you look, I was actually recently relocated here full-time. So, it's in the process of actually changing jobs. So, I was actually living in Harlem, working in Teaneck. I took a job here. Actually, I'm starting a new MS Center at Jersey Shore. I'm the director of that. And so, there was a lot of things happening in my life transition-wise since that. So, I kind of had those... get those ducks in a row before I was ready, really, to sit down before you guys and kind of introduce a project so I can have time to like really, you know, develop it.
So, some of the statements on your application where it would be done by December 2019, obviously, that has to be changed because there's no way we could do this and you could finish this between now and then. That was based on...
I mean, I was dealing with architects. I was dealing with a lot of different people.
Right, yeah. No, believe me.
Okay.
I love it.
Okay.
You wanted the application in by December 31st.
Right, and don't blame me because we're no longer entertaining these. So, I'm glad you... but Amy's right. This is what we were looking for.
If we had gotten... If we had gotten these applications over the last five years, we would, we would have continued with the five-year tax abatement, but that wasn't what we got. We got places that were already built.
Now, the only thing I would ask you, and I don't know if it's a legal question or a Michelle question or everybody question, if we say yes, can it be stipulated in the agreement, like, you cannot change the use for the five years? It has to stay the artist? We, we don't give it to you, then next year it becomes a seven-eleven?
No, I understand. I mean, the only thing I, I say to you is that, you know, that the idea, the basic plan is the artistic aspect of it. You know, again, it's the financial viability of it. I can't build something and then basically go bankrupt because nobody's coming to space, so I may have to, obviously, I, I'm not gonna turn it into residential, but I wanna have it with an arts land, so I'm gonna do everything. That, that's the purpose of this property and the, and the mission statement and everything going forward. But, I mean, I mean, I don't know what to do. If I, if I build a building and nobody comes for a year or two years, then, you know, then I have to kind of reassess with, I guess, with the council, is, or if you make that stipulation, I could come back to and say, listen, here's what I'm facing. Can you help me through this journey to get that transition to where I wanna be? I guess that would be the, the thing I would say to you.
Excuse me, I don't think this is personal, but I don't believe this is the time to build that, this type of program on Springwood. I don't think it's built up enough. I don't think the people in the area will attend at this particular time. I think after more development starts, I think, because I really think you're gonna lose out, which is just saying. You know, you might redecorate the building, do this, that, and other, and yet and still, nobody shows up. Now, as you're transforming people in there, that's a different story too.
Well, I think the community needs that. I think the kids of Asbury need that. I think it's something that would hopefully have actually young...
I could be wrong. I could be wrong for that.
So, I mean, I could be wrong, but I hope I'm right.
I think it's a great idea, but, and you do have to start somewhere. I understand that.
And, and your plan includes free art programs for children and everything, so your plan is very ambitious.
The artists that have the studio space would also, a part of their kind of agreement would be that they would spend time doing some kind of instructional, whether a photographer or painter, so that they could somehow dedicate time that would be involved in their, in their application, their part of being in that center. I mean, I'm looking for a special kind of people, obviously, but I think Asbury actually has those kind of people, to be honest with you. So, I know there's a shortage of, I know there's a shortage of actual art spaces. I've talked to, like, Jersey Shore Art Center. There is, like, a backlog. They won't even give the numbers, but there's a backlog of people looking for places to, to do art, so I, I just can't believe, I mean, I, like I said, I drive that corridor. There's nothing but empty lots and, and not many businesses there right now, and so there needs to be, for that to ever happen, there's gonna have to be a crystal, a crystal that starts, you know, the process, and, and I, I thought this would be kind of a mixture of not just a, you know, something that just was there to, you know, a five-and-dime or something like that.
No, you're absolutely right, and I support it a hundred percent, as long as we can get some type of language in there where, it's gonna stay this way, except if X, Y, or Z happens, then you have to come back to us before you can change.
I understand.
I would have no problem with that whatsoever. That's something, again, Michelle...
There'd be no reason why you, if the council was to vote on it, agree to do it, you can't condition it. Like a planning board application, you condition it upon it being used for particular purposes.
Okay.
There'd be no reason.
But, again, I don't want them to go bankrupt because I built it and they didn't come. So I want them to have the option to...
So in my mind, I thought, you know, if something happened where, say, you know, there was a problem as far as how much the revenue place was, in order to, like, pay, pay the bills and so forth, you know, maybe there would be somebody interested in maybe a food cooperative, maybe in the front, that could somehow supplement the income for the artist to use so that there's something that would benefit the neighborhood, but could support the viability and the financial viability of the, of the structure and the expenses, to be honest with you.
And that's language you and Michelle and the attorney will have to figure out.
You can write conditional language. You can leave it to some discretion. He can come back with a plan and it will be reasonably reviewed.
Right.
We can certainly language that.
No, again, uh, I read it. I was like, I liked it. So thank you for, like, sticking your neck out and your money on the line for a road that needs something, so thank you.
Some tender loving counsel.
Thank you. Questions?
I don't think so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to review of agenda items for the July twenty-fourth regular meeting.
Resolution twenty-nineteen dash two sixty-three is the special event applications. Twenty-nineteen dash two sixty-four is authorizing the tax collector to extend the third quarter grace period. This is a standard bureaucratic thing where the tax, the certified tax number came in a little later, so we extend the date and people can pay the third quarter bill. And twenty-nineteen dash two sixty-five is the extension of third-party municipal debt collections. When this was bid out about two years ago, there was a, a third-year extension, an extension through two thousand and twenty-one. We're requesting the authorization of the extension. If you remember, during the transitional aid period, this was a requirement that this actually be bid and awarded. The state has even said that around the state, most people aren't collecting these. We're just gonna have it in place. We're not making much money on this. I think it's only five or ten thousand dollars a year we collect, but we still wanna keep it in, in, in effect. So is there any questions or comments on the consent and agenda items? Hearing none. Moving to twenty-nineteen dash two sixty-six is the improvement, approving the payment of bills. Two sixty-seven is authorizing the purchase of an SUV for the construction department. This is out of the capital ordinance. It will replace a twenty-twelve Ford Escape, which will go to code enforcement. Two sixty-eight is authorizing professional service contract for KMA, Kyle McManus Associates, for the affordable housing planning. The primary focus of this will be to develop ordinances as part of the Affordable Housing Plan. Two sixty-nine is authorizing professional service contract to Lurch, Vincie, and Higgins for pilot billing. This is no cost to the city. This is paid for from the redevelopment area bonds and the redevelopment area bond administration fee.
Michael, what, what are they doing exactly?
They, they actually put together the pilot amount of what people owe, pledged versus unplaged. They did it for us last year, also, and the year before that. They've come in and reviewed everything. So they're familiar with the, the pilots associated with the redevelopment area bonds, South Grand Drive, eleven oh one. They've done all the legwork. They replaced MuniCap a few years ago.
Right.
So they know everything, and they actually did this last year. We didn't have a contractor. They build the trustee directly for services. This costs the city nothing. Moving on to two seventy, it's a contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management. This is for the continuation of the services for the lake. Two seventy-one is inserting a light item of revenue. This is the seventy-five thousand dollars that Madison Marquette is required to pay out of the one hundred and fifty thousand, as per the SDA, which is used for police officers along the boardwalk and beachfront area through the summer season. Two seventy-two is...
So that's a partial payment?
Yes, the first one was a couple months ago.
We got some, we got the original seventy-five?
Yeah, it's one fifty total. They do it in two parts increments, seventy-five thousand.
And we got the first part already?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Two seventy-two is referring the Sunset Lake Master Plan to the planning board. After much public consideration, there was a, one or two meetings. This was discussed also at the Sunset Lake Commission. The master plan is done for the park, and staff is recommending referral to the planning board for inclusion as a component of the city's master plan. This calls for, and this is also available on our website. This calls for great improvements from stormwater management, from aesthetics, from grading and vegetation across Sunset Lake, which will be the first step in phasing out how to improve the lake and the surrounding area. Resolution two seventy-three is authorizing the city manager for signing contracts of purchase of electricity and natural gas. Two years ago, we used E-MEX as an auctioning service for traffic lights, regular electricity, and natural gas for the city. The contracts are all up in early two thousand and twenty, so the market right now is in the municipal favor. This will save us approximately nine to fifteen thousand dollars next year on electric, electricity for streetlights and natural gas, on top of what we've been saving over the last few years. This will authorize me to sign the contracts, and for the larger city component, the pricing hasn't been there and will be going out to bid again probably in the fall. That's for, like, municipal buildings, the, the senior center, public works, and the sewage treatment plant and the firehouse. That pricing hasn't been where we've wanted to see it. And two fifty-eight is entering into an agreement with Regional Development Group LLC for the property at two fifteen First Avenue. Staff is recommending tabling that. Is there any questions on any of the resolutions?
I have a couple of questions. The resolution two seven-two, it says referring the Sunset Avenue Park Master Plan instead of the Sunset Lake...
All those changes have been made in the software, so the final one will have Sunset, Sunset Avenue, and then the municipal access plan that Wendy Glassman hit recognized is also a change. Those are all done in the software.
The two seventy, awarding contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management, I know there was an issue with the commission members during the last time that we hired this company because they didn't get a chance to look at the bids and look at the options. And I think in the Sunset Lake Charter, it gives the commission the ability to and, and the right to, to take a look at those bids and, and the companies that are bidding on them. So it, I know it was an issue before, and I don't want it to become another issue.
If you want to table it, you can table it, but it's recommended for approval.
I think we need to table it.
Okay.
When's the next treat?
Uh, this is for next season.
This is for next year.
Okay, yeah, then table. It was up on the website since Friday, the table, yeah?
Hearing no other questions, we'll move to ordinances for introduction. There's an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section Forty-nine, parking utility. Mr. Manzella and I would like this to be changed. We've been discussing this with some of our attorneys, to a transportation utility. Parking right now really hamstrings us for just parking uses. But we believe that if we amended to change the language to transportation, we'll be able to do other things. For example, one of the things Mr. Manzella and I have talked about is upgrading the, the bus shelters and the bus stations. So this would make it larger where it's all transportation. It lines up better with the bicycle and pedestrian master plan that was just adopted. It will allow us to use the parking revenues to actually be more of a transportation revenue and just allow us to be able to do more things than just parking-related. And thirty-three is just some changes to the city code. For second hearing reading tonight, it is the salary adjustments. As previously discussed, I'm pulling up the exact ones right now. For the parking attendance for the next two years to go from a minimum and a maximum, and then the other one is for the planning board secretary for a range of dollar amount. Is there any questions on those ordinances?
On the park, on the transportation utility, would that mean that the parking funds could only be used for the utility or could continue to be used for other things in the city?
Parking could only be used for parking. This will allow it to be for transportation-related things. So if at some point in time, if there was enough money...
Like roundabouts or more traffic lights or blah, blah, blah.
For example, one of the things in, in various plans has been in, like, a shuttle service. This would be able to help subsidize the shuttle service because it's transportation-oriented. We're not there yet, but at some time we might be, and we'd rather be able to meet the future growth of this. Thank you.
Matters from the City Council?
I'm gonna ask, uh, that Amy goes first, just to read the statements of the mayor and council.
We just want, similar to what's been reported by the press, we wanted to just confirm that there were two unrelated shootings in Asbury Park last night. We cannot provide details to them. We've been told by the Monmouth County Prosecutors that we cannot, but that they are diligently working on the case. We also wanna remind the community that last year, we became a stigma-free zone with the goal of erasing stigma associated with mental illness so that residents can get treatment. We have a social services department headed by Doug Schultz to, for individuals in Asbury to both see him or refer people to him. And last, I wanna stress that if anybody knows anything about the shootings that were, that occurred last night, to reach out to the Asbury Park Police Department or the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office with any information that they have. That's all.
Okay, um, so the council members will be getting together occasionally in different venues around the city to meet, have coffee, and encourage residents to come out and share any concerns they have with us, or just come meet us, come talk to us. We'd love to know what's going on in your, in your neighborhoods in, in the community. And Yvonne and I will be at Busker Dew on Tuesday, July thirtieth, from ten till eleven o'clock on Memorial Drive, so please feel free to come out and chat with us and, and let us know what you're up to, what your concerns might be, and we'll see what we can do just to, you know, have that conversation and see what we can do to help out. These will continue throughout the year as well. So we look forward to seeing you there, and we're buying the coffee.
This Saturday, the Christopher and Dana Reed Foundation is sponsoring a family day for all people, including those with...
Friday.
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, including those with disabilities. So it's an opportunity to have wheels on sand and what they call wheels in the water. So anybody who'd like to come out, it's from two to five. There's gonna be a beach party, and starting at five o'clock will be a bonfire on the beach. And that is this Friday, July twenty-sixth. And I'd also like to thank Surf Rider for their family day last Saturday that had our children in the water, learning how to surf, having fun, and families of Asbury Park had an opportunity to come out and just have a free day on the beach. Free lunch, free surfing, and just a good time, so thank you.
I have nothing at this time.
I wanna remind people about the back-to-school supply drive, which is taking place Monday to Friday, from July twenty-fifth to August sixth, and people are to drop off new school supplies to the clerk's office, and, and the city of Asbury Park will distribute. And thank you to Lisa and Cassandra for doing a great job on this event every year.
Okay, the only thing I have, uh, Tuesday, August sixth, at Springwood Avenue Park, from five to eight, is National Night Out. Usually, it's a great event, probably the best in the county. Other towns will disagree with me. If anybody has any questions or anything, please get in touch with Lisa or Cassandra. Thank you.
Matters from the city manager?
None at this time.
Matters from the city attorney? We will take a short recess, and the regular meeting will begin at seven. Meeting called to order. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall? Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here. Ask for roll call for Mr. Kendall if that works.
Councilmember Kendall?
Here.
We are on to asylum prayer, a moment of reflection. Please stand. We will now salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two thirty-one, PL nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January second, two thousand and nineteen, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Do I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Kate, Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Okay. Please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Three and a half minutes?
Three.
Sorry. Ernest McNally, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Esberry Park, New Jersey. I think at some point, we should maybe try and be like Long Branch, another city, where they give five minutes, but that's a minor point, I guess. I'm trying to find out how much indebtedness this city has. I'm getting all kinds of different numbers, somewhere between 40 and 50 million, am I correct? I think we're.
Yes.
I know. Okay. Let's move on. Just a minor thing, you know, whether it's 40 or 60 or 80 million. I'm appealing to Esberry Park TV. Hopefully, other municipalities will start to hear the few people who come up and object to almost everything that's going on in this city, from schools to police, to fire, to everything. And we're hoping that these messages get out because what transpires here is a travesty. It's a travesty of justice. I'm a homeowner here for 12 years. I've owned property all over the state. I have never seen a municipality or been treated as a homeowner as I have in this city, ever. It's just total disrespect, no transparency, and things are getting so bad that I remember when this Esberry Together was sworn in, I think it was 2014, and I think Councilman Kendall said, you know, we're taking over like this is Dodge City and we're the sheriffs. You know what? It's gotten worse. So, you know, I mean, it leaves everyone speechless. So there's no transparency, there's no one to call, you know, here. And we have a city manager who, at least from the people I talk to, we'd like to have the person recalled somehow. So we need help, and that's why I'm appealing out there to wherever AP TV goes, get us some help. We need, and let's just hope that the former budget person that worked with this city manager here in Esberry, up in Holmdale, who was just asked to resign, let's just hope she's not applying for the Assistant City Manager position. Because some of the hires here are very, very strange, and that would include the city manager, some people at DPW with sex crime records and stuff like that. So it is what it is. And basically, in three minutes in coming here, you go nowhere. It's just like a charade that keeps going on and on and on. And again, I'm appealing out there to other municipalities, like get us some help, we need help, you know, in this city. Crime is murders, stabbing, shootings, blaming everything on the west side. The two yesterday were on the east side. So how do we blame the west side for everything? Soul on the east side and Seventh on the east side. And by the way, the case is taken over by the Attorney General, so there's no one to call in that regard. The one on, I'm going to leave for.
Long Branch? And Ernest, I was looking, I have the debt number someplace, and I don't want to say it off the cuff without knowing them for sure. You can call the CFO tomorrow and she'll give you the actual numbers.
The number we have bonded out.
Excuse me?
The total debt.
Yes, yes.
And that wouldn't include the higher up.
It's actually on the website. If you go to the Financial Department on the website, the annual financial statement.
Okay, and I know within the next two meetings, we can't do it yet because the state has a, state's running behind, we'll have the audit and it'll be in there also. So, but I'll get you the real numbers as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Drive careful.
Good evening, Tom Gilmore, 1308 Fifth Avenue. I'm back for the issue that, about the beach lockers, which I brought up before, that somebody said they were going to get back to me, nobody ever got back to me. What I do know now is that all the beach lockers on First to Fifth Avenue paid for the full season, all the beach lockers on Fifth, Seventh Avenue paid for a full season, all the beach lockers on Sixth to Seventh Avenue are not getting a full season. So that's why I'm here. I want a credit for my locker and everybody else who's on Sixth and Seventh Avenue because of the concert that's coming. Or I want a cash refund, one or the other. We deserve it. You've cut about 30% of our time using the beach locker off. I know you're now considering actually shortening the season, so you're penalizing everybody for the fact that we're having a beach concert on the beach right now. I don't think that's fair. You're discriminating against everybody who rented a locker on Sixth and Seventh Avenue. Second reason I'm here is the work that was done on Bridge Avenue also included some work on the small park, the Triangle Park, that's at Fifth and Locust and Bridge. The work's been done for about three months and they left a ton of material on the street and in the park. The Shade Tree Commission built this beautiful rain garden in this park and the job is not done. It's a mess. I know if this park was on Fourth Avenue, it would have been cleaned up and taken care of right away. So I want an answer on the beach lockers.
Are you done?
Yes.
I don't understand your statement if the park was built on Fourth Avenue. Because that's where I live.
Yeah.
When they put the portage on in front of my house, I said, do not move it. So you're totally wrong and you're totally out of line, which is not the first time. As far as your comments at the last meeting, you said, if I'm going to suffer, be it you, that everybody, including the South End, should suffer also.
I never said that. I never said that. I said, you're discriminating against people.
I'm not going to debate, you said you were done, so your time's up. If it's not up, you can go ahead, then I'll finish.
Well, you're discriminating everybody on, everybody on Sixth and Seventh.
Did you get a letter saying what the hours, what the year would be this year? Did you get a letter?
I did.
And did you go down and sign a contract agreeing to that letter? Yes, you did.
Okay, I did, but everybody, I paid the same fee that everybody from First to Fifth Avenue paid, and they get to keep their locker until October 30th. Well, we didn't know that when we signed the contract.
The same letter went out to everybody.
So why are you charging us more, the same money?
Tom, the same letter went out to everybody from First.
I'll tell you, it's a money grab is what it is.
I will personally pay back for any money you are out on that locker, just to get, just to make this issue.
And.
What about everybody else? It's just not me.
You're the only one who keeps coming.
And.
Well, they probably don't realize that everybody paid the same price.
And everybody got a letter saying the date. When the letter went out, we said, we're going to try to extend it. We're still working on it. So it's not a done deal yet on the North End. Could it be the, whatever, with the letter you got and the contract you signed? Nobody put a gun to your head and said, sign this contract?
No, they didn't. I agree. I signed the contract, but then I found out that I paid the same price that people on First to Fifth Avenue paid.
And the people on First to Fifth Avenue got the same exact letter.
They did not get the same letter.
There was no, no indication that they had to get out by September 9th, John.
They got the same exact letter.
They did not. I talked to a number of people who have lockers there.
Well, your next door neighbor, three houses away, is Gary Garvison, senior, he sent the letters and he's assured us all, everybody got the same letter. If you're not happy with it.
Okay, so, so then everybody on First to Fifth Avenue needs to get all their stuff out of the locker by.
No, that's what you suggested. If you're going to be punished, everybody should be, suggest, we're trying to work it out.
I'm not, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying, John.
That's what.
I'm saying that I paid the same price, but I didn't get the same product.
That's what you.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you inferred the last time you were here.
Right.
If I'm going to be punished, I want everybody punished. That's how I took it.
No, no, that's how you take things. That's not what I said.
Well, that's why I love AP TV. We can go back and both watch it.
Okay.
As far as your time is up, this is going nowhere, the decision has not been made final, you got a letter, you signed a contract, you knew the dates, nobody put a gun to your head. If you're saying, let's cancel, see here and now, because.
I'm just saying you're discriminating against people on Sixth and Seventh Avenue because you're charging them the same price for not the same product, John.
And we're charging.
That's what I'm saying.
And we're charging the lowest price of any beach town around.
That's not the point, John.
And we're charging.
You're missing the point.
End of conversation.
It's just the way, it's just like discriminating against people in the city.
You got a letter and you signed a contract, and now you don't like the letter, you don't like the contract, so that's America. You're entitled to.
Okay, I'm not done. What about the park?
You're done now.
I can talk about the park, Tom. So I was actually at that park this morning with the Shade Tree Commission doing some weeding. The Shade Tree Commission actually did not plant that park. That was part of the partscape, which is not over yet. They're coming back in to do the sidewalks and walkways. They'll be back in, I believe, next week, and then that park should be finished and look a lot better than it does now. But in the meantime, the Shade Tree Commission was there today, will be out another day to pull weeds and, you know, just beautify it a little bit. But as far as the materials are there, they're there because the work's not finished.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda Phillips, 400 Deal Lake Drive. I was happy to hear you mention this thing about the city being a stigma-free zone, is that what you called it?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, there's a lot of shootings going on in the city right now. It seems to be increasing. And I know that in the past, a few months ago, we were talking potentially about having a human rights commission or some sort of police review, civilian review board or something like that in the city so that we could actually have our hands on what is actually going on in the city from day to day, maybe help prevent some of these things from happening. But the question that you raised in my mind after you said that is that if we're officially a stigma-free zone, what does that really mean? Was there, when there's a report that goes out that there's somebody with a mental illness having a problem and the police go out with guns, shouldn't there be somebody actually first with them who might try to handle the situation without violence? Because that happens all over the country. I know it's not unique to Esberry Park, but if we're trying to be a better, improved city with these kind of issues, I mean, saying you're a stigma-free zone, but still having cops be the first respond person to a, to a report of a person with mental illness having issues on the street, doesn't seem to be the best way to handle things. That's my comment.
I mean, I can just talk about, so there's requirements to being a stigma, I don't know them off the top of my head, but we certainly had to meet them. I believe that I cannot say anything else about this shooting, but there are requirements that the city met to become a stigma-free zone.
Okay. So you're saying that we can't know whether or not that they have more than just police with them when they go out on those kind of calls? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying what kind of call it is at all.
Oh, okay, all right. So my other question related to this is, I know it's being reviewed by the Attorney General's Office because that's the law now, but will we ever know what the results of that are, or is that something that gets kept secret?
When the Attorney General's Office tells us, we'll tell you. I think, go ahead, so I don't take any.
Yeah, I don't know. I just don't know if that's part of the law, that the community gets to know what the results of the investigation is or not.
Okay, and I don't want to cut off any time, so.
No, that's all.
Okay, and I think the Attorney General's decision that any shooting like this should be invested by the state police, I give him, I thank him 100 times over.
Yeah.
I think, John Moore personally thinks internal affairs should be either county-wise or zone-wise, it shouldn't be 566, police departments have 566 internal affairs. So I'm hoping the Attorney General looks at everything and everything maybe changes the laws also, because I give him a lot of credit. That was a great decision on his part where we don't even have the tapes, they're out of Esberry Park. The state police have them, and again, I thank the Attorney General for passing that and making, any shooting like that is looked at by people not in the community. That's my opinion.
Right.
Thank you.
That's a good opinion.
For calls, yes, the last option is forced. And for any call of service that within certain realms, obviously there's exceptions, there is crisis intervention that is done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dwayne, small 1304 Madison Avenue. First, I want to, my thoughts and prayers go out to the person who lost his life, to the police shooting, and also to the young man from the community who we know who lost his life over here the other night by being shot. John, when we ran for office in 2014, and you know what I'm talking about, one of the major issues was violence, right?
Yes, sir.
And everybody had a plan for it. Since y'all been in office, y'all have not came up with a plan to address the violence. The only thing y'all do is send the police in there after the fact. And what does that do? That creates more tension between the community and law enforcement. Y'all are not doing nothing about it, John. You know what the solution is, John? The solution is these jobs and this economic boom that's going on in Esberry much reach the people on the west side of town. Let's be clear about it. Young black men and young black women. Y'all don't have no plan to address that. If you go around our town, everybody in here know who's doing the work. Outsiders and the undocumented. Ain't nobody saying nothing to the effects that undocumented immigration is having on black communities, specifically here in Esberry Park. And it's not fair to us, John. We've been here waiting since, what, the early 60s before I was born to see this go on? And then now we gotta take a backseat? Of course you gonna have problems between the police and the community because we being economically pinched. You know, you hear people talk about diversity. It's an illusion. Diversity is only good for the people who are actually benefiting from it. Young black men are dying, man. Right over there where y'all got that camera at, them young black men is beefing right now. It's shootings over there and nobody even hear about it. My stepdaughter lives over there. She hear it, like me and you talked this morning. When the police come because they don't find no shell cases of somebody injured, that does not mean it wasn't a shooting. And it's because of lack of opportunities. Everybody knows this. Any community you going across this country where it's lack of economic opportunities, what do you have? You have problems with the police. Wasn't that the case in Baltimore? Wasn't that the case in Ferguson? Wasn't that the case in LA? Wasn't that the case here before I was born? Because I could remember reading an article in the paper when the black churches came before the city councilor said and demanded that 100 black youth be hiring it in the city. And this is what I want to say last, John, and I thank you for giving me this time. Where are our black churches? They won't even let young black men be buried in their churches, and that's a shame. But when something happens, they're going to be the first ones in front of the microphone. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. If you followers of Jesus, the ones that go to church in these black churches, I'm talking black churches, then do what Jesus did, get out there in the street and help. John, you know what the problem is? Put together a plan. And it was a complaint filed about the micros not being in compliance with Section 3. Are we going to let this next developer do the same thing? Not hire us, but getting all this grant money in our name?
Okay, Dwayne, I'm going to have to cut you off.
Thank you, John.
I thank you for speaking tonight. I thank you for calling me, and we have great conversations. We had a conversation today where we talked about employment. And I said, Dwayne, if you know people looking for jobs, there's people up and down the boardwalk saying like, we're 10 people short, we're this many people short, and we're not talking about like $8 an hour jobs. Now, we're not talking about $30 an hour jobs, but if people are looking for jobs, and you and I talked, and we might have one young lady that we're going to take down and take to Marilyn or take to Russell and get her a job. So there are jobs available in Esberry Park. People down on the beachfront and other places are begging for help, and they run ads all the time. So we have to work together, and I think you and I, as some people will get upset where you addressed me, you're doing the right thing because I am the mayor and I'll take the hit. But I think you and I have a great relationship, and I think we're going to make a lot of like headway, and when you're ready to meet on the other thing with Danny, you know, I'm there. So again, every time you come to the microphone, I thank you for like bringing it back to our attention. And yes, in 2013, 2014, we all ran, and it was worse than, you know, and I'm not going to stand by the numbers, but they are the numbers, the crime index has dropped dramatically in Esberry Park in the last several years. So we are doing something right. Enough? Absolutely not. I don't think any town in America is doing enough. I don't know what the answer enough means, but I never take your comments personally. I take them as constructive criticism and like giving me a kick in the ass and saying, pick up the speed. So I thank you.
I appreciate you, John. You're a good man.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Rita Marano, 8th Avenue. I think you better listen to Dwayne. He's been preaching this for I don't know how many years. You have to get to the undocumented people that are living here. Now they're starting to have parties here. I mean, like, you ought to call about, forget about your social activities. All you talk about is the movies, the gay and social things. How about forgetting about social for a while and concentrating on the real problem here? And it's not social. Everybody knows how to get social. Everybody can find out when there's a movie. You spend 10 minutes every meeting talking about social activities. Now I want to talk about what I really came for. Thank you, I wanted to thank him anyway for what he said. The city manager knows what I'm talking about. You sent me, you sent me my Oprah request, but you left out seven, eight, nine, and 10, I think, of all the approvals from Jersey Central, Power and Light, First Energy, Verizon, and all the computers and all the cable stations. I didn't get any of that. That has to come down and you know it. I don't know why you favor it, but why you send out employees to put it up? If anything, put up the American flag, not an organizational flag. That doesn't represent all of us and it has to come down. Now, I want to know why I didn't get all my Oprah requests about the sign. I got last year's folded. It's exactly the same. I don't know if you used whiteout to wipe out the date and put the new date. I don't know how you did it. But you did not get approval from Jersey Central, from First Energy, from Verizon, and all the cable stations. There's no approvals. In three days, you're supposed to wait 30 days after you put in your request to Jersey Central to get approval and they have to come and do the inspection. They should go see that one screwed into the wood. You're supposed to put a merciful, such as a banner. A banner goes across the street like Ocean Grove. They're 150 years old. If you had that up, we'd love it. But you don't have that up. You have a flag up that doesn't represent everybody in this town. And that's another thing that has to change. You can't cater to a certain few. The whole, you have to, when you think, you have to think big because all of us aren't the same way. And you know that. You see people like Dwayne, you see people like me. Louise and I aren't the only ones that are thinking about this. We're a land of laws. How about abide and by them? We have to abide by the law, but not you? Now, you broke the law when you put the flag up and you've got city workers to do it. I mean, it's not, it's not fair. It's really not fair. And I want to know what's gonna be done about it. The June is over.
Okay, Rita, your time's up. Your time's up.
I know. Do I get an answer?
You get an answer? Yes, just as much as like Amy said to Mr. Gilmore, we can't drag this on. Michael.
Rita, we put, this council took a policy decision to put the gay flag up for the month of June.
No, 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 no. She's talking about the banner on Main Street.
I believe Garden State Equality because I thought, I think I'm CC'd on their application to have their, the gay flag put up in front of Garden State Equality on a JCPN L flagpole. I believe I'm CC'd on that application. I'll go back and look.
Why don't they put it on the building? Why do they have to put it on that Jersey Central?
Okay, Rita, 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 that's not your question. You want to know, did they get permission from JCPN L?
You're not gonna break the law, Amy. I'm not gonna break the law. I assure you, I'm not gonna break the law.
You put up a fence.
Well done, Laura.
We have to keep some sense of humor.
I can't hear you, John.
No, okay, so, Michael, between now and the next meeting, can we bring this to a head? And if somehow some pages of her Oprah request were not given to her, can we prove once and for all, everything was done legally?
Once the application comes in from any organization or individual that wants a flag, it comes to me. I reviewed it. Garden State Equality actually provided inadequate insurance. I sent it back to them saying your application's incomplete. You need to provide appropriate insurance. They then gave us back the certificate of insurance. They met all the standards of our application, handed it back to them, and from there it goes to JCPN L and other utilities for approval. All we care about on our insurance side, all we care about on the city's application is that they provide the city insurance, naming us as additional assured. It was approved by JCPN L. We have nothing to do with any of the other utilities. They've met the requirements of the city's application. It goes on its merry way.
That's not what it says in the last countergrail.
Rita was provided.
It's not your poll, Michael.
Rita, Rita, Rita.
It's not his poll. What's he saying?
Rita.
He got approval?
Rita, he's answering the question.
It is not our poll. JCPN L approves it. We cannot approve anything on someone else's property. The Oprah request was for any and all communications and Rita saw this because the emails were then provided to her, back and forth between Christian and myself saying your application's incomplete, you need to do A, B, C, and D. He did A, B, C, and D. It goes on its merry way. This is a JCPN L poll. We do not approve anything. We are named as an additional assured is required. It goes, it goes off and we're done with it.
So, the city's stance is the same as the last time you asked it. The city's reply to you is it was done the correct way. They applied and JCPN L approved it.
It's our approvals. Why you say?
We don't have JCPN L approval.
Yes, you do.
No, we do.
There's no writing. It says it right here.
JCPN L approval is JCPN L's approval. We don't, it's their poll. They're the final, the final thing on the whole thing. That is it. It's done.
Okay, I'm gonna give you a copy of the final one, what it says. You need the approvals from them in writing and it has to be inspected by them, not you. That's what it says.
Yes.
We have a copy of it. We ain't lying about that.
Okay, Rita, thank you.
No, but it's on hand, John. That's how it come down.
Louise Murray, Grand Avenue, Asbury. I have three things, maybe four. I'm not sure. Right now it's three. I need please for somebody to explain the Resolution 2019-269. I don't know what that pilot billing means. So, that I need to have explained to me. Our diet street. I get up early in the morning. I usually go to mass. And twice this week, somebody passes me on the right by Third Avenue. There's the bump out, almost smashes into me because they're going along the right-hand side. I memorized, I memorized the license plate because it was out in New York and I beeped my horn, they're just waving on. Okay. Again, again today, pass me on the right and cuts over because of the bump out. I go, "Your diet street?" We were told, I think, someone said, "We were told that if those bump outs don't work or the street doesn't work, we have a year to decide." The state, we went along with the state. I want to know, is the state gonna give us one of these? If you like your plan, you can keep it. If you like your doctor, you can keep it, period. I mean, this is like, this is gonna be the issue here. That's the second thing. The third thing are the scooters. I need to know how much liability is Asbury Corner be facing with these scooters? My daughter was in Nashville this past weekend visiting her brother and apparently there was a severe accident. Guy got killed, he was on the scooter. Whose liability is it? Will it be the driver, the scooter, or whatever? And how much liability are we gonna be facing if anything like that happens to us? I don't know how much insurance we have to cover or any of that. Especially you take a town like Nashville, everybody's like in the cups. Is that the term these days? I don't know. But they're shoring the cups over here too, I'll tell you. They're amazing. They measure how much fun they have by whether or not they're throwing up. Now, as far as the sign goes, I'm gonna hit that real quick. According to the report, it clearly says that Jersey Central has to inspect the poll, give you a written agreement before the flag is erected or whatever. I mean, I didn't read it right now, but that's what it said. We don't have anything like that. We don't have any approvals from Jersey Central at all, at all. We just have the same stuff from two years ago. So, here I am.
Finish your paragraph.
I'm done. I had the three plus a little bit of that.
Michael, explain 219-269, please.
219-269 is Pilot Billing Resolution authorizing Lurch, Vinci, and Higgins to perform free of cost to the city. It doesn't cost us anything. It gets paid through the administrative fees of the redevelopment area bonds for billing of pilots for five South Grand and other I-Star projects.
In other words, we're hiring somebody to do the billing for them.
They do all the math. They do all the calculations.
Okay, okay.
And the scooter's liability, there is, the city is always named in any lawsuit for anything that ever happens. So, we're gonna get named, we have insurance requirements for $1 million per instance, $5 million in an umbrella. We have that already in place. We're negotiating and discussing with them to extend that amount. And we also have a hold harmless agreement in place that says that they indemnify and hold harmless the city for any actions where their attorneys would have to pay any, any fees that we may incur for future litigation or medical bills. So, the liability to the city is very, very minimal. We'll get named anyway, but that's what happens. We get named for stuff that happens on the boardwalk, on sidewalks, the housing authority. We always get named because people think we have deep pockets.
Okay, and the other thing with the, our so-called diet street.
The road diet. Talk to Mr. Manzella, please. He's over there after the meeting.
I mean, those bump outs, I mean, what are we gonna?
The bump outs were discussed with DOT that after the project is complete, there'll be a one-year evaluation period. And if the city doesn't think that they work, that they will be tweaked, removed, however it works to fit. But after the project is complete, there is a one-year evaluation period.
Wow. The other thing is if they do decide that that would be the safest way is to take bump outs out because you gotta figure we're gonna get snow and all that other stuff, are they gonna reconfigure the whole road? I mean, are they still gonna make it the one lane in the middle and the crossing and all that? Because I'm telling you here that that Deal Lake Drive, that's a crazy setup. You go onto Deal Lake Drive, your lane to make the right over the bridge is all the way to the right and between that lane, and then there's a bike lane between that, and then there's a lane to go left into Asbury. That's cockamamie crazy.
I can't talk about your cockamamie crazy, but I could say that part of the negotiations with DOT was to minimize hardscapes, that we were going to be using painting materials as much as possible for lanes so that things can be changed easier in the future. So, these things were taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
And I totally agree with you. I think Mr. Manzella and our engineer totally agree with you about Deal Lake Drive. And we tried to get the state to change it because you got a center turn lane, but you can't turn in the lake and there's nothing to turn right on, so it makes no sense whatsoever. We've asked them to change it repeatedly and, oh, announce the good news. Well, announce the good news.
Oh, they're gonna change it to a gored stripe instead of a two-way left turn lane.
What's the middle lane gonna be?
A gored stripe. No, no traffic.
Nothing, nothing. You won't go in the middle lane.
So, we went from four lanes to two lanes with a middle lane for nothing.
For left turn lane on the Grand and every.
So, we could have gone to one lane each way and a dedicated bike lane instead of a middle lane for nothing. Yeah, I mean, again, Louise, I'll get you the name. There's a Jeffrey Lonigan and another young lady who, there's so many problems with this project that we're not even allowed to talk to the contractor anymore because we're so ticked off at them. So, we have to go to a middle person and we ask, it's up on our website, we ask everybody and anybody, when you have a complaint, let them know because, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. This has been a nightmare of a project. It's got worse now because the south end is gonna be delayed another year because now they forgot about the gas company putting in new mains. So, that's gonna delay it. So, as much as we said it's gonna be a pilot project for a year, the years are gonna kick in for three years. So, it is a pilot project, but when does it start? When they're done with it and they're never gonna be done with it for two more years? And I agree with you, but the more people we get to complain about it's a terrible engineering job, it's been that way for, since they announced it five years ago and we fought it and then they finally said, you know, let's try it. We okayed it. But there's still many hiccups that, again, public support is appreciated. Thank you, Louise.
Sylvia Sylvia, the Executive Director for the Chamber of Commerce. I had three quick things. One, I wanted to commend the DPW Fire Department, Police Department, their handling of the weather emergency that we had on Monday, Monday night. And I know that Asbury Park maybe didn't hit, get the destruction at the levels that some of the neighboring communities had, but the orchestration of having the, the lights that were out, having the traffic controlled and the trees that did come down, they were on it. So, congratulations and thank you for doing that because it made it a lot easier for those of us who had to traverse the streets. The second thing is our visitor's guide, as you, I know, have seen, is out. And I wanted to thank your Communications Director, Sonia Spina, and your Transportation Director, Mike Manzella, for all of their help and input on it. We had the map redrawn with streets that had not been on it since they didn't exist when it was originally drawn. And we had it revised to have one unified color throughout the whole city, just identifying the business corridors in a different shade. And I think it looks really beautiful. We've had a lot of great feedback on it. So, again, I just wanted to thank them for their input and help on that. And the last thing is the fellow that spoke about the project that he may be doing on Springwood, and I know it's a little bit away, but I did get an opportunity to speak with him about that art facility project and what he's offering to provide for the children just really was, I thought, fantastic, just a really wonderful project. And if it does end up getting off the ground and does become a reality, we will make it our mission to make sure that if he builds it, it do come and that he is able to sustain because I really think that that's a fantastic thing on the Springwood corridor. And as you know, the chamber has been offered space in other areas many times, but I think that it shows a commitment to all of Asbury Park that we stay there and we are looking forward to all the great things that are gonna come around in that section of town as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I thank you on behalf of everybody, all the great work you and the Chamber of Commerce does.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna jump on Sylvia's point because my, I'm, I don't know if people know this, but I am still without power and several down trees and limbs. And the Asbury Park Fire Department and the Asbury Park Police Department responded very, very quick and checked my backyard for, I have a ton of wires down in my backyard, and checked them for live wires. And I couldn't have asked for a, you know, a better response came to me. And then immediately we're back out assessing other situations in Asbury Park. And I also want to thank DPW for coming out at night, cutting up the tree branches. So, if you saw the next day the tree branches cut up, that was really DPW pulled in to do that. So, thank you for that reminder, Sylvia, because all three of those departments did a really amazing job for the storm. And one day I'm gonna have power, right?
I don't know. Friday night.
Good evening. Dan Harris, 17 Rich Avenue, Asbury Park. Fortunately, we have power except for an hour and a half on Rich Avenue. So, kudos to the electric company on that one. to the electric company on that one, but I got a lot of damage on my Neptune property, so be it. First off, I'd like, you know, my condolences go out to the families of the two young men who passed last night, and I would only hope that the madness that exists, not just throughout the city, but throughout this country, would stop, and that we can all live in peace instead of in anger. But putting that to the side, about two weeks ago, I walked, I came home from an expungement meeting to find my wife unconscious on the floor. I immediately started giving her rescue breaths and pushing on her chest and putting water on her face and smacking her around two times, and she didn't come to. So, I would call 911, and I will give credit to the Asbury Park EMTs who showed up immediately. And while they did not bring her to immediately, they did assist me greatly in getting her to the hospital, and now she's home and she's healthy. So, a lot of times, you know, we always kicking the city in the butt, and a lot of times, you deserve it. But this is one time where you came through like champions, so I, and people won't say good things about the Fire Department and the EMTs, but they did an outstanding job, and to see them work and how professional they are and how quick they are and how compassionate they are, I can only say thank you to the city for the job that they did. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're also happy that your wife is doing much better. And just so everybody knows, Danny's the type of person, he called me earlier in the week and, or the end of last week, and personally thanked me, and I said, Danny, I will pass along to the Fire Department, so, which I did, but for him to come here tonight, I cannot thank you enough, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. Howard Raj Kewitz, Moonstruck Restaurant, Lake Avenue, Asbury Park. There's a few things brewing on my street as far as the pending construction that's gonna be taking place in the not-too-distant future. It's already started with the Sackman property. The streetscape is getting a little rough, and I've called zoning and, you know, tried to complain about the garbage cans that are on the street from the Beer Garden since May. Six or seven garbage cans now reside in a parking place or the old driveway, and it's a major thoroughfare. The Lake Avenue is going towards the beach, and a lot of the visitors are potentially future taxpayers that are gonna choose to live in Asbury Park if we have a best face forward. And I'm just asking that we please be mindful of Lake Avenue as far as its streetscape, its cleanliness. Yes, the street sweepers come in, thank you, but there's some code enforcement that I think needs to be looked at as far as the way the businesses are putting out their garbage at night, open lids, there's a lot of small things, but it's really, really looking trashy. They dug up the parking lot, it looks awful. It's been like that for two months and three weeks now. The dust has been blowing into the restaurant for, ever since then. You know, so if you could direct me to the person that I would talk to in the city to maintain the work site in a visitor-friendly manner, there's only one to change the subject, but that's pending. The other side, I understand Ivan and Andy's is, parking lot is under contract, there's, it's been approved or permitted for 20 units. Has it been approved or is it permitted use, is my question? And I just hope that when the time comes that we are involved in making the decisions or decisions are being made for the project that has yet to be established to the east of us, that it will not inhibit our business as far as our views and our livelihood, because we rely very much on our porches. Visitors come to the city, they're willing to wait an hour for a table on the porch, only to be blocked by a monstrosity building that's coming up. Yes, it's good revenue for the city, but please, if you can, you know, be mindful of the fact that there's four restaurants that are very busy. We create a lot of trash, a lot of smoke, a lot of noise, a lot of late hours. There's, we're gonna be mixing residence with commercial in a very tight, compact place, and we do need a person or liaison that I can speak to by email during the days to address our concerns also. There's only one handicap spot in front of our restaurant, and I believe that the tags that I look at in the cars are usually out of date, so I'd like to stay on top of the enforcing the up-to-date handicap stickers on my street. See you next time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Nicole Harris, 17 Ridge Avenue. So, I do wanna thank you also on behalf of my mother, the police department and the EMTs and everything. I was in New York City when that happened, so you can imagine my panic with having to deal with that via the telephone, that my mother was found unresponsive. So, I thank you for that. I do wanna talk about, I'm asking you to be very intentional about whatever needs to be done with the police department and the vetting of officers that come to work in our city. You are all aware that two people were killed last night in the city, and one was at the hands of a police officer, and from what I understand, the person that was killed had mental health issues, right? And I read your statement that you released, which was appropriate, I believe, for the situation. And when dealing with my own family situations with the police in this town, some of the answers that I got from your very own officers were, well, you know, they were on in the west side of town, and you know, it's kinda dangerous over there, so, you know, you just gotta be mindful of how our police officers feel when they're on that side of town patrolling. And I explained to your officer, I live there. You don't have to tell me about the west side of town. I live there. So, if your officer is scared to come over there for eight or 12 hours, how do you think I feel living there every day? And so, if I have to be sensitive to how your officer feels while they're on duty, don't you think they have to be a little bit sensitive to the fact that I live there 24/7? So, if we are hiring people who are scared to serve the community, because they're coming here to get a paycheck, I am asking you to vet these officers better before they come here to work, because I really feel like the police department is about to become your biggest headache. And I'm not talking about all the police officers, because I know that we have excellent officers, but we got a few that are bugging out. And for someone to have died last night, when they didn't have, from what I understand, I'm just reading, you know, things in the paper, I guess, like anybody else, but people have been thrown to the ground by police officers, now shot and killed, and the answer that I get is that I have to be mindful that as they patrol certain parts of town, they have to be extra sensitive. That's not an answer, because people live in all corners of this town, and if I have to be extra sensitive because they're on my block, that's a problem. So, I don't know what you can do. I'm asking you, though, to be very intentional about this, because I don't wanna keep coming up here and talking about the policing in this town or the overpolicing in this town, but something seriously needs to be done.
Thank you, Nicole. And if somebody made that statement to me, what was made to you, as far as like, I would be more ticked off than you are, and that's totally unacceptable to me, so we'll look into it.
Can you email me when it happened and what officer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, how you doing? My name is Curtis Barnes. I rested 2056 Avenue in Carl Harbor, which is a nursing home. Been there for a while. And first of all, my condolences to the two guys that passed away. Both was murdered, and I passed away. My condolences goes out to them. I've been having a problem here in this city. I've been born and raised in, which is Asbury Park. I know you guys recall me being here, which was last year sometime, and I was searching for housing and still going through the same thing. I finally found housing, but I had to find housing all the way out in Atlantic City. I did receive a Section 8 voucher, which is like recently, maybe six months ago, and I was gonna lose my voucher if I didn't find somewhere to stay. So, I had to go all the way out in Atlantic City and find somewhere to stay. I did apply for the Renaissance, a couple of different places out here, and they turned me down. Don't know what the problem is. I don't know what's going on, but it's really like disturbing to me that I can't get a apartment where I was born and raised at. Been here for years, and I do have like a spinal cord injury group, which is called Epic Willpower. I'm also the president of the United Spinal Association, New Jersey chapter, and, you know, we go around and we actually do lots for our community, and there's no way that I should be actually having to go all the way out to Atlantic City to actually find somewhere to stay at. And on top of that, if I, if anything happened to me, I have to go to the hospital or anything like that, my family is all the way out on Trent, so it's gonna be hard for them to travel, and Asbury Park also, for them to travel and actually see about me. So, I have to be all the way out here alone, all because I can't find anywhere in Asbury Park where I was born and raised at, basically. So, and I did speak to this lady here, I don't know her name, but I spoke to you a while ago, and you guys did give me applications, but they didn't accept my application, don't know why, don't know what's going on, I don't even know how I got denied from all these places I applied for.
You know, when you get denied, you can call my office again, because we represent people in denials. It's my, separate from this job. When you get a denial letter from a housing authority, Renaissance, Asbury Park, whoever it is, I won't represent if it's Asbury, but somebody from my office will conduct a grievance hearing on why you were denied, just FYI.
I don't know, some things, just credit and everything like that, but it's still, I had a Section 8 voucher, so I still don't understand like what's going on, why am I having to go all the way out to Atlantic City?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm gonna give you our number. So, there are legal reasons to deny people from housing, and I'm not gonna go into this, because this is my second, this is a different job. There are legal reasons to deny people housing, and oftentimes, you have a hearing, you explain, like, for example, bad credit, you get a pay, there's a whole bunch of ways around it. I'm gonna give you my name again and our number, and if you have applications where you are not being, where you are being denied housing, you can give me a call.
All right. I'm actually going out to Atlantic City in a second, so I have to probably wait a year just to come back out this way and find a place.
I think we have an office in Atlantic City as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and we wish you best of luck.
Good evening. Jennifer Lewinsky, 1404 Eighth Avenue in Neptune. I had a million different things to say before I actually stood up here, so I'm gonna try to keep it simple. Do we have a timeline on the HRC?
We don't, and I'm gonna take complete blame on that. I would say we started strong with a bunch of meetings with community members, obviously you being one of them. I would say in the last six weeks, and I will own responsibility, I have dropped the ball. I had hoped to pick back up in August and September, and our timeframe is October, but I will, I will own the responsibility on dropping the ball in the last, in the last, I'm gonna say, six weeks.
Okay, so it's getting real, and I think we see that, and I know that the crime numbers are down, the crime numbers are down, because people are in prison. We have a super high recidivism rate. People go to prison, they come back. There's nowhere for them to come back to, right? When you come home from prison, you can't go visit your mom in Lincoln Village, you can't go visit your mom in the APV, you can't go see your family because they're in housing, you can't go to visit someone that has Section 8 voucher, right? You can't come home. So, you end up going straight back to jail, right? Because there's nowhere else to go. So, the crime numbers are down because people are leaving, because they don't have anywhere to go, and that's not success. That's not a measure of success, and I just wanna make sure that everyone understands that the crime rates are dropping because people are not here. So, I don't want to have a vision of crime rates dropping and things getting better. Crime rates are dropping and things are getting better for some people, but for a lot of us, it's not getting better. We're just getting pushed out of here. And that is a culture that's being built, and the people sitting before me are the people that are building the culture, and I want you to intentionally think about the culture that you're building and how it's getting built and the backs of the people that it's getting built on. And that's all I can just say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion closed.
Move to close.
Second. All in favor? We're on to Item F minutes, and we have the minutes of the July 10th, 4:00 p.m., the July 10th, 6:00 p.m., and the July 10th, 7:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to Item G, Consent Agenda Resolutions. We have 2019-263, a resolution approving special events applications. 2019-264, a resolution authorizing the tax collector to extend the third quarter 2019 grace period. 2019-265, authorizing the extension for third-party municipal debt collection through July 16, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We are on to Item H, Individual Resolutions. We have Resolution 2019-266, a resolution approving the payment of bills. Councilmember Chapman will be abstaining from 19-01971, 19-02159, 19-02204. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to Resolution 2019-267, a resolution authorizing the purchase of an SUV for the construction department. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2019-268, authorizing a professional service contract, KMA, for affordable housing planning. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to 2019-269, authorizing a professional service contract to Lurch, Vinci, and Higgins for pilot billing. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to 2019-270, awarding a contract for Sunset Lake Pond Management.
Motion table. Move it.
This is to table 2019-270. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to 2019-271, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, providing the insertion of special items of revenue in the 2019 budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon, 4-87, Chapter 159, waterfront redevelopment contribution. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to Resolution 2019-272, referring the Sunset Lake Park Master Plan to the Planning Board. Do I have a motion to table?
No, that one, move it.
Second.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't.
Oh, we're not table?
No, it was the other one.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
To Resolution 2019-273, resolution authorizing the purchase of electricity and natural gas. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second? Do I have a second? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 258, resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Asbury Park Resolution 258, resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a subsequent developer agreement with Regional Development Group LLC for the development of a property located at Block 3901, Lot 11, 215 First Avenue.
Move it.
Motion table?
Motion, yeah. Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to item ordinances for introduction. We have ordinance 2019-32, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 49, parking utility with a public hearing date of September 11th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-33, ordinance of the City of Asbury Park amending Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Asbury Park regarding traffic regulations with a public hearing date of September 11th. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're on to second readings, public hearing. Do I have a motion to open ordinance 2019-26 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Motion closed.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor? Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2019-26, an ordinance amending salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park?
Move it.
Do I? Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open ordinance 2019-29 to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
2019-29, an ordinance amending salaries of certain employees within the City of Asbury Park. Does any members of the public have a question?
Yes. The salaries are being increased.
I'm sorry, so you're going to have to get up to the microphone to state your name and address and we'll answer your questions.
Mark Allen Purvis, beside 120 Monmouth Avenue, bodyguard is now Asbury Park Guard. Kind of late, I see everyone with the handouts and pamphlets about certain things being passed. Just curious, what salaries are being increased and to what level and amount?
This is for a title is a parking attendant. It's making the the old minimum was $10 an hour. In 2019, it's going to be maximum $17 an hour. 2020, maximum $20 an hour.
Is that a job open to the public or law enforcement?